Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, April 18th, 2018 at 7:30 PM. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Potowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes for the meeting of Wednesday, April 4th, 2018, and bills for payment on April 14th and 21st, 2018. Ms. Allen, Mr. Potowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
Can you come up to the mic, please?
Good evening, I'm Dennis Jones, I live at 1148 Brown Avenue. I just purchased 830 East Fifth Street, remodeled it. The repository list lot is adjacent to it, right beside it, and I would like to, me and my family would like to turn it into a personal playground, fenced in, have the kids a safe place to play. Thank you.
Do any council members have any questions?
Madam President, are you caring for the property right now, sir?
I am.
And right now, it's just a grass open lot?
It is, and luckily, the grass hasn't grown yet, but it's nothing like a fresh cut lawn, you know, it's kind of relaxing, so keeping it maintained is no problem. I'm also a contractor, so I enjoy working, and God has blessed my hands and feet, and I use them.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Any more questions? Okay, we'll get back to you.
Thank you, good evening.
Are there any more repository sales?
Yeah, there's two of them. David Smock, 2436 West 32nd, proposed 738 and a half, East 11th, and 625 East Eighth Street. Basically, going to, if these are approved, clear the debris, assess the structures if they can be, you know, rehabbed, if not, I'll endure the expenses to take it down, you know, if that, you know, it's a risk involved, understand that. I've had a little bit of success with other repository properties that I've bought, so. Any questions?
Any questions?
David, the one that you want on East Eighth Street, were you aware that someone else wanted that property as well?
I was not aware of that at this moment. I just put in the bid. I'm pretty sure these are closed bids, so I don't know if, how that works, you know.
Would you be willing to give that up?
Well, you could have them contact me, I'd certainly, you know, consider it if someone has a better reason, especially if they own adjoining properties, or if they have a better plan than I did. I'm, I just basically look around and I see a lot of these blighted homes and trying to see, you know, trying to rehab them and to find another home for them, or, you know, use them for our family, either one.
I would like your phone number, because I would like to talk to you about the one on East Eighth Street.
Sure, that sounds good.
Are there any more questions? Okay, we'll get back to you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sir.
Sir, the clerk's gonna go right there, and, thank you.
Are there any more repository sales? Are there any more repository sales? Last call. Are there any more repository sales? That brings us to citizens to be heard. Citizens to be heard.
We have one on the agenda for Cynthia, if she's here, there's one.
Is, is there a Cynthia Allen here?
I found this person, I believe. Good afternoon, thank you very much for listening. I am Julio Reyes, my wife and I-
Excuse me, excuse me, we need your name and address.
I am Julio Reyes.
Okay, your address?
My residency, I'm a California resident and an investor in this town. Which address do you want?
The one here, in the city of Erie.
1315 Parade Street.
Okay.
I am Julio Reyes, my wife Lilia and I own a small software company in California. We have been investing in Erie for the last thirty years now. Our investments include Latino Restaurant on 1313, 1315, on Parade Street, which we opened in 1996. I wanted to present this information because I need a quick resolution. I am trying to finish a couple of projects in town. Based on your resolution, my wife and I will decide if we want to continue investing in this town or not. To my surprise, I found out that I have a lien in one of my properties, that I honestly thought it was already paid fifteen years ago, at the time I had a local manager working in my restaurant. I have no interest in paying this amount, because I already invested a lot of in this community. During all these years, we have suffered harassment, false accusations, and possibly fraud, while receiving services from local and professional contractors. Actually, even the EMTA took our properties by eminent domain, we lost about $150,000. My wife and I have spent our own money to improve Parade Street and the neighborhood against all odds, attracting people from all over the world to our restaurant. We have been there for 21 years, you could read the reviews about us in the social media. Besides fixing and maintaining our properties around town, we have spent additional thousands of dollars putting concrete in a public alley next to Latinos, between Latinos and the Foresters Club, and bricks and stones in another alley across the street. We spent this money not only to beautify the neighborhood, but also to improve the traffic and safety and reduce risk. The question is, how I ended up here today? A local attorney recently sent me a notice offering her services, because her office found out that I have a lien. Her letter went to the wrong area, the wrong address here in town, but somehow, the post office delivered it to my home. I went to the county office and got a copy of the lien. I called the city solicitor officer to get additional information. Ken Sac told me over the phone that I should talk to Jennifer Mahoney at the Treasury Department. He said there is nothing else he could do. I went to the Treasury Department looking for Jennifer. Lauren attended me and gave me a copy of the lien balance. I told her that there was no way the numbers in that paper were correct. She told me that I have to talk to city council if I disputed the numbers, because she could not, she could not, she could not do anything about it. I went to the mayor's office, and Nicken brought me down to the city clerk office here, introduced me to Lori, to present my case, the necessary paperwork, and to be able to present my situation into your agenda for a resolution. So here we are. My letter, the letter that I gave to Lori, Lori shows in detail all the pertinent information about this lien and the payments I already made. I believe that the paperwork that I have already paid the full amounts for the unfair demolition. Thus, I refuse to spend any more money. I would, I would also like to say that if you do not resolve this case in my favor, somebody should start making arrangements to take not only that lot, but much likely all my other properties in town, including Latinos. I guess losing those properties to the local government and its authorities will give us the final excuse to pack and leave Erie once and for all, going back to our home in California. My paperwork, I don't have all the necessary paperwork, because this lien is in 1997. As far as I am concerned, I paid it off in 2003. Now, they are requesting me to have copies of the council checks and all the correspondence way back then. I never knew about this lien, and as far as I am concerned, when the manager left, the lien was paid. I provided as much copies as I have, but now, they are asking me for the back of the checks with cancelled papers, with cancelled payments, even though I have letters from the city that matches the amounts that I paid. So, the original demolition was for about $9,000 and something. I pay $9,000, less, about $155 less. If I look at the lien today, the lien is for $15,735, $15,735 with 97 cents, and the assessed value of that lot is $4,700. This is ridiculous, to say the least. Anyway, thank you very much, I hope it's in your agenda for the next meeting, I really appreciate you listening to me, and I hope you take care of this, because it's affecting my credit record right now. Thank you very much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Brendel, 4131 McClellan Avenue, Erie PA 16510. Before we even start, 223 years ago today, the town of Erie was laid out. So today, is our 223rd birthday. Correct. Quick question, since the July 4th is Independence Day, is city council gonna reschedule their July 4th meeting? I know you usually reschedule them, but I just want to ask that quick question. Third, I've contacted Pennalec, Verizon, and Spectrum about this. My sister's house is 10 houses north of McClellan Avenue. There was a pole that got caught on fire twice, and that pole is still standing. My big sister's house, and the house next to it, north and south, almost caught on fire, and that pole is still up. There is a project that Pennalec and Verizon is doing to replace the poles on McClellan Avenue, and it needs to speed up, it needs to get done, and quit doing one pole, one day, because there was a fire. We have this weather that we're going through. The safety of this residence on McClellan Avenue, in the 5th Ward, 19th Precinct, where I reside, are at jeopardy. That's why I'd like to bring the city council. The safety of my house, and on McClellan Avenue, that's the third thing. The packet that I gave out is a list of current legislation and policies that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is doing to help protect the LGBT community. I know I've given you this before, but this is more of a detailed, detailed handout. The last one is gay conversion therapy ban. The closest county, closest municipality that just enacted their own ban is Erie County, New York. That means the city of Buffalo, and all the municipalities that are in Erie County in New York. They enacted it last month. On April 13th, and today, the Human Rights Campaign, and I have been talking, and the bridge is set. They're willing to help Erie's Municipal Inequality Index. So, that's why I'm here to tell you, that I've given you a draft version of the gay conversion therapy ban that they've been passing out, and several items that are easy fixes for the city of Erie, like an LGBT liaison with the city of Erie, and an LGBT task force with the city of Erie Police. I would like to applaud Mayor Shember and the administration for recruiting minorities within the police force, and the fire department, and city services, and employment. That is a step in the right direction, and thank you, thank you. But now, I would like to keep going further. On visiting Erie's website, there's a link that promotes the LGBT community. We have to stop putting the cart before the horse. I've been sitting on that horse for a long time, as an LGBT advocate and a spokesleader for Equality Pennsylvania. Right here is documentation from the stairways, that indicates that social exclusion, discrimination within the LGBT community has been occurring and is wrong. I'm sorry, but this is truth. Even the HRC told me today that there has been qualified, good candidates that stood up for city council, school board, and positions on public, that got discriminated, that got hated. And what happened to me in the past two years should never have occurred. Social exclusion should not occur in our community. The more we leave out, the more negative things happen, and it needs to stop, and it needs to desist. Promoting the LGBT community is great, I'm all about it, but our Municipal Inequality Index states something totally different. That's one thing that we have to take the picture of, the bigger, broader picture. If we're gonna come, reside, come to be entertained, come to have fun, then we must be truly transparent. Stop the bull, stop the rhetoric, stop, oh, this, we're progressive, we're doing this, we're all this, no, 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 that, that's wrong. We should include everyone in organizations that represent a minority community, and stop the bickering. And the first thing is that I would like to say thank you to city council. My voice is being heard, you've welcomed me, you've included me, you've accepted me. This is what America's morals and values is all about, what we're doing here today. And with those organizations and those leaders excluding me out and not having me part of the process, state's different in these documentations, and needs to stop. And, good morning, America. Today, was already talking about non-discrimination laws, and laws that talk about what I've been talking to you.
Your time is up, Jason.
All right, thank you so much, and I'd like to say that our First Lady, Barbara Bush, was an excellent First Lady, and I think we should do her respect by having a moment of silence for her.
Good evening, my name is Roma Johnson, I reside at 333 East 26th Street, which is the south side. I was here last month, complaining about no curbing being on the street. I gave you all some pictures, so you can see how the property looks. Since we've had that bout of rain and the, uh, uh, snow has dried up, the situation's only gotten worse. I've had people come by my house, noticing how bad the water was in my yard, and they say stuff like, "Serious, seriously? What can I do about it?" It comes into my yard. I believe that if we had curbing between the sidewalk and the street, that would make it a whole lot better. It has also been brought to my attention, that most of, most of the damage done to my house. I sense learned that some of the property belongs to the city of Erie. I'd like to put some concrete fresh on my property, but what's good in putting it there, the water's gonna flush it right away. I pay my taxes just like everybody else. If I don't pay my taxes, I'm gonna lose my house. All I'm asking for is some consideration, as to get something done here. Now, if I've lived on, let's say, 38th Street, how fast would it get done? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Crystal Leepack, and I am the Youth Service Program Coordinator for Youth Leadership Institute of Erie. This Saturday, we are going to be celebrating our 8th Global Youth Service Day, as the youth in Erie come out and support the communities by doing different impact projects. So, one of the things that they have going on for them is going to be a kickball tournament. We've sent several emails out and phone calls, and AmeriCorps has been awesome in helping me tackle this duty here. So, the kids have decided they would like to kick out hunger, and run a campaign to be aware of the issues of hunger in our community. So, and $1 and a non-purchased, non, sorry, excuse me, non-perishable food item, that will get you into the game, not only to participate, but also to spectate. They have reached out to city, county councils, school board members, and representatives, and community leaders around Erie, in an attempt to bridge a gap that has been always long overdue to be connected. So, we've invited some police and fire as well, and our first responders. So hopefully, we'll have a great turnout for that. We also have other projects going on, where they have a community garden at 11th and Wallace, that they were able to procure last year with the, I think, believe it's the Eagles that owned the property. So we've kind of adopted it, and this year, we're gonna be going ahead, moving forward with getting it all prepped and ready for next month's planning, because we know this month, we can't be planning anything. So, they're gonna be bundling up really well on Saturday, so we want to invite you all out to come and join either our celebration or play with the kids, just to show them, you know, that we have a nice community here that do care about the youth and the positive things that they are doing within our communities. So many times, we hear of so much negative, and these kids have so many different things that come at them externally, and then they're just expected to process everything internally, and just go about the day, when we don't realize what they have going on behind closed doors sometimes. So, it's really awesome to see when they come together in city and county. They don't have the boundaries and borders like some adults do, and they don't do east versus west. They come together and they work together on common ground, and that is to make their city better, to make their counties better. Because if the kids don't feel connected, they're not gonna care. And they're not gonna care unless they see people caring. So, we have to set the example, and they actually so far have been setting the example. So I'm really proud of them. I've got brochures and flyers here, I'd like to give to you, if that's all right. I don't know who I'd give it to, actually. So please come out and join us on Saturday, and we invite everybody to come out and join us on Saturday, and just connect back into the Erie community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, second floor. I wasn't gonna come here tonight, but I did want to address a couple of things that I think are very poignant, to make sure we don't lose track of. One is, first off, Julio Reyes talked first tonight. Tomorrow night, from 6:00 to 10:00, we have a fundraiser at his restaurant, Latinos, for Erie CPR. There's, there's questions out there about, is Erie CPR just about the bridge, we're not. We're about all non-vehicular modality on the east side. That's, that was our original calling. The viaduct is the lightning rod, because that can either transform or kill the patient. So that's why we're so passionate about it. But again, Latinos tomorrow, from 6:00 to 10:00, hope to see some of you there. Another issue I'd like to touch base on is, I was down in Harrisburg for two days, yesterday and the day before, talking to legislators. There is a tension growing for bike pedestrian infrastructure. It is growing, and luckily for us, it dovetails with the need to reduce the use of the car in the Erie area. Now, some of us got together, thanks to Erie Downtown Partnership, Erie County Health, Bike Erie, and we put on an application for a grant, the Aetna Grant, to get planning going. And, and I think Emily Fetschko at, at the Erie Downtown Partnership said Abby, she did have some conversation with Abby, "Perfect, that's exactly what we want to do. We want to energize that new office you established, thank you." We need to all work together on that, and, and we need to make sure we're hearing all the right voices on that issue, so we make the smartest decisions. Harrisburg has bike share. If Harrisburg can have it, there's no reason Erie can't. We just have to get there, and it's not a silver bullet, we have to work for it. But there are, you know, I'm sitting at a table, and there's like eight people there, giving their time to work on something for Erie. That happens all the time in this town. It's amazing. That's one of the reasons I love the place, I came back, I settled here. We've got it, but we have to work together, and facts have to be the basis. As much information as we can get, and stay factual. Our biggest complaint, of course, during the whole viaduct process is everything's done in the back rooms. That's still going on today. Emails, letters, it's still going on, and what we're saying is, there's an easy way to change the tide, have the public hearing. Then you can say, hey, we've done everything we could possibly do to be fair on this issue. But as it grows on, new people come in and out, the same bad habit continues. That's horrible. You can't publicly say there were three public hearings. That's illegal. There was no hearing. That's why PennDOT doesn't use the word hearing in any of their reporting on this issue. Those kinds of facts are fundamental, and they're foundational to how you solve problems. That's why we want the public hearing. We're ready to put all the facts on the table, we're just asking that you are too. So please consider that. Meanwhile, we've got a crisis looming on the Bayfront Parkway. We have projected great increases of volume of traffic on a highway that gashes the east side, a lot worse than it gashes the west side. And we have to realize that we need to do everything to diminish that oncoming increase of traffic. Bike, pedestrian, and non-vehicular modality is the best way we're going to help solve that problem. And there are so many people in the community, ready to work on that. But I'm asking, please be open and listen to everybody. The other day, when we had the Erie Refocus Meeting at Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network, bless you, there was a clear message, just stop the bad messaging, and don't call the east side the red zone, and, and we don't care anymore. Take advantage of that plea, and issue new messaging. Be firm and direct, the east side matters, and thank you.
Dorothy Jordan, 3436 West 10th Street. I'm here tonight because of Father Jerry from St. Anne's. I've watched him for years, begging for help, first for stopping the tires-to-energy plant from poisoning the entire city of Erie. He's again begging for our help from concerned Erie citizens, to stop an atrocity in the making, the demolition of the McBride Bridge. The McBride Bridge gives the citizens of East Erie the only safe passage over four sets of railroad tracks. I'm here to take a stand against demolishing the bridge, and to stand with the people, the poor, the powerless, the neglected, the ignored, citizens of East Erie. This atrocity would never even be considered if it were in my neighborhood, or Frontier Park, or Glenwood Hills. The people would not tolerate it. In the words of Martin Luther King, "There's a cancer growing in this country, and it has infected Erie, Pennsylvania. Erie has been declared the worst city in the country for people of color. We are a national disgrace. If we go through with the demolishing the bridge, we will live with the shame, not if, but when, a child or a disabled person is killed on the Bayfront or the tracks." How will you feel when a child has to be scraped off the front of a CSX train engine, or the Bayfront Highway? If you have such a lack of vision, that you can't see your way clear to saving the McBride Bridge, I suggest it's because of three reasons. One, you're a coward, which means you've been cowed by someone or something. Two, you're heartless, and willing to sacrifice the helpless children and powerless disabled- Two, you're heartless and willing to sacrifice the helpless children and powerless disabled who are unable to defend themselves. Three, you've been corrupted by the powers that be. This is a dangerous game you're playing with the lives of the most vulnerable in our city. If you want to remove the stench that is enveloping this move, then take the time to have an unbiased, professional contractor or architect. Give the citizens of Erie an authentic, detailed, certified assessment that restoring the McBride Bridge to a recreational parkway and safe passage across the treacherous tracks and highway is not worth the money. Then and only then, when another child is killed crossing the Bayfront Highway or the four sets of tracks, your conscience will be clear of any complicit nefarious collusion. We need to know there is no funny business going on. You don't need a sack of cash to offer a bribe. A cut-rate loan works just as well and would be easier to hide. You need to remove any and all speculation that this office is not being used to enrich himself or his friends. Someone needs to investigate all the lies and obfuscations. It is your fiduciary duty to the citizens of Erie whose children's lives you are putting in jeopardy. You have the duty to investigate and remove any and all appearances of corruption. Why aren't you doing your due diligence? We want to know who is going to benefit from this action, certainly not the citizens or children of the east side of Erie. A quote from Moliere says, "It's not only what you do but what you don't do that matters." I cannot ignore the racial implications of this decision. The stakes are high. You have your children's lives in your hands. Whatever happened to the values we used to cherish in this country like integrity, morality, and ethics? You are your brother's keeper. You look, you took an oath to care for all of the citizens of Erie. You are paid by the east side taxpayers as well as the west side. They may not have as much money, but wasn't it Jesus who said, "The poor shall inherit the earth?" A quote from a book written by Herman Wolk states, "What matters is living with dignity, with decency, without fear, in the way that honors one's intelligence and birth." If you want others to be compassionate, practice compassion. If you want to be happy, practice compassion. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
My name is Harry Deery. I'm living at 242 East 32nd Street, Erie, PA. First thing I want to say is thank you for something that you haven't even noticed yourself, is so far, the motorcycle crowd has been a lot quieter. I've had my third bad heart attack this month, and those ear-splitting noises they make have almost sent me into a heart attack several times. So please, do something to enforce noise on motorcycles, and car mufflers too, for that matter. Now, I want to speak about the viaduct for a minute in that I think what you have done is cold-heartedly split the poorest neighborhoods in Erie into three parts now. At first, it was only two parts, but now it's three parts. You've got one on each side of the expressway and one on the other side of the viaduct. And I believe that the sensible alternative to destruction of the viaduct must be found if you can't save that viaduct. And thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council, mayor. John Schubert, 2413 East Avenue. I'm going to just give a short story similar to one of our council people talking about his car. My uncle, maybe some of you knew him, was Dr. Felix Schubert. He was your city and your county health director. He was also responsible for setting up the Lakeview Municipal Hospital, which I believe is the barber center. They had approximately 100 iron lungs back in the 50s. The heaviest time was in August and September for polio. Dr. Schubert had fought also to get the vaccine once it came in, and his objective was to get it free to everyone here in the city and the county and that. But the reason I'm bringing this up on air is Dr. Schubert, at family meetings and that, one of the things that he always instructed, and I learned from him, was listen to the people. The people that are involved in certain things know more than some of these outsiders that come in for a few hours here and a few hours there, and they think they have all the answers. They really don't. So like I said, one of the things on there, like I said, was he always said, "Listen to your people." He was on your board of directors for some of the banks and furniture companies and school director as well, and he always stood up for the people. And that's really what I think you folks should be doing, is listening to the people. What they're asking you for is to have a public meeting. And quite frankly, I've been on this non-paid for eight years now, and I'm a private citizen, but I'm really appalled at what I've seen happen from day one going through. The administration, the previous one, it was very difficult to get across to them. We were hoping with the new administration that be able to sit down. At the last council meeting, I believe you had a meeting where you were going to petition Kelly, Congressman Kelly, to have a public meeting instead of these so-called private meetings. And it's basically what the people are asking for here. You know, this country was built in a lot of freedoms and that. We're not a North Korea where the people have to be afraid to say something. In fact, if I was the boss, I would be very glad when someone told me, "Hey, you may be going in the wrong direction," because if you have yes people around you, you're not going to succeed, believe me. The other thing that I wanted to bring up on here was, one of the things that we have to address is that cable situation here in Erie. The people are going to end up after a year paying $11.99 per box if they're under Spectrum or under Time Warner. If they're under Spectrum, they're both the same company. It's something like $5.75. And if you look at the number of people that are on this, this is going to be millions of dollars that's not going to be coming back into our economy here. They elected to put a signal in there that you need to decode it with a box, and they did that because of theft. Why should we, as citizens of the Erie, have to be paying for them for that protection? Particularly, like I said, when you're talking, you know, if they have a million customers throughout their agency, when you're talking those kind of numbers, we're talking millions of dollars, and this is just dollars that are going out for whatever reason, and it's not coming here to the city of Erie. And that. And the other thing I'd like to bring up is, on 18th Street, across from where Poles is, the Liberty Iron, it's kind of rough up in that area. And there used to be a sidewalk that went down, and you have a fire hydrant right on the corner as you're coming, and that fire hydrant has been hit, I don't know how many times. They had big blocks of cement. In fact, I called and had those blocks put in there, and that explained to them the fire hydrant gets knocked out. That fire hydrant probably should either be barricaded in somehow or possibly moved to another area. But again, thank you for your time, and please reconsider these folks for the public meeting. Thank you.
My name is McDonald. My property is 19th and Reed. I have a few issues. I want to say to our president of city council, I'm sorry to see you in the fix you're in. I don't know how you got there, but my heart goes out for you. I haven't heard nobody say anything about having compassion for you. I have compassion for you. I'm sorry you're in that position, but things just happen sometime that go against us. I want to say something about that bond grant money. Whatever happened to that money? That money used to be for poor people's, people's to improve their property. What happened to it? What happened to it? Can't nobody tell me nothing? Can't nobody tell me nothing? That's too bad. Y'all supposed to know what's going on up there. You're supposed to be mothers and fathers of the city. You're supposed to be looking out for us, the taxpayers anyway. We carry the freight. I don't understand some things. I see a lot of work going on around the city, and I don't see nothing but white faces. We're paying taxes too. I don't understand you people. And I've been with y'all, I've been around y'all all my life, raised up with you, but I know one thing, we've got a hell of a screwing in our lifetime here in the city of Erie. I've come to believe what I'm told, that this is the most prejudiced city in the nation. As far north as we are, there should be some love somewhere. Ain't no love. There could be no compassion if there's no love. And y'all looking to go to heaven. You're going to bust hell wide open. You're only fooling yourselves. You're supposed to, I don't know. You look at, look at these jobs. I've been speaking about this way back, that what about jobs for the black boys out there? They didn't choose their color. All I see is white faces on these jobs. They were hired down at the water authority. I didn't see no black going down there getting no job. They didn't get no job, whether, because I had a couple to go down there. They ain't get no jobs. I don't know. Y'all think you're going to heaven, but you're going to bust hell wide open. If I have, if I go there myself, I try not to, I have no prejudice, but a lot of you go to bed at night on your knees praying that your brother will fall down in a pit. God made us all. We all got the same kind of organs. What's so special about you that you hate your brother? You hate your sister? You hate them. You do. That boy that the cop jumped out and beat his eye out. I have told you time and time again, I said, "The cops supposed to arrest the guys, arrest whosever that's breaking the law, and the courts over there supposed to give justice." But it's not like that. And then when they do mess up, you try to make things, sweep it over, sweep it under the rug. Look, when God come back, and he's coming back because my Bible said he is, you know, you're going to, "I didn't know. I didn't understand." That's your problem. Read the Bible. If you ain't got in there, get one. Try to live by the Bible. If we live by the Bible, that would be a lot of love, but there's more hatred than there is love, and that's too bad. It takes more energy to hate than it does to love. Believe that. Believe that. I want to say a word or two about that bridge over there. I don't know why it's so important for that bridge to be torn down. Somebody is getting their pockets patted. That's all I can see, and that's a shame. But that money ain't going to do you no good. You done spent enough money on that bridge to build it back. Thank you for your time.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last call. Are there any more citizens to be heard? That takes us to ordinances for final passage.
Ordnances for final passage. Council File 15620, official ordinance number 11/2018, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $304,474 in the City of Erie Debt Service Fund from unanticipated and unappropriated fund balance. This appropriation completes a transfer of balance sheet account between the general fund and sewer fund, which alleviates inter-fund receivables and payables between these funds. By Mr. Murzky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the council file bill number 15620, and now known as official file ordinance number 11/2018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City council pass official file ordinance number 11/2018, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 15621, official ordinance number 12/2018, an ordinance closing and vacating the 25-foot portion of the right-of-way at the northwest corner of West 8th Street and Beverly Lee Drive to be added to parcel index number 170410310300. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Murzky, the council file ordinance bill number 15621, and now known as official file ordinance number 12/2018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City council pass official file ordinance number 12/2018, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 15622, official ordinance number 13/2018, an ordinance closing and vacating a public alleyway from West 21st Street and West 22nd Street between Peach and SASS with reservation of existing utility rights of way. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Murzky, the council file ordinance bill number 15622, and now known as official file ordinance number 13/2018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City council pass official file ordinance number 13/2018, finally by a seven, nay zero. Ordnances for first reading. Council File 15623, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $207,830 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development as Appalachian Regional Commission Section 214 supplemental funding. This grant will be utilized to invest in sidewalk, curb, and green space improvements for the deteriorating area of West 11th Street between SASS and Peach as part of the Erie Renaissance District Revitalization Project. By Mr. Murzky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the council file ordinance number 15623, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15-623 by a seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File 15-624, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $100,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof in the Capital Improvement Fund for use of public safety equipment as donated by Gannon University. By Mr. Murzky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Number 15-624, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15-624 by a seven, nay zero, That'll take us into new business.
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to move to the balance of the agenda.
Are there any separations?
Need a second. Second.
Thanks. Are we going into new business?
Yeah. Separations. Are there any separations?
All right. No separations in. Moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. We do have waive rules. Madam President? All right. And this is in regard to the purchase order for the civic engagement. So, voting to waive the rules. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. By Mrs. Arrington and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue a purchase order to the Civic Engagement Office at Allegheny College, Main Street, Meadville, for the lake effect leaders' Vista Member Host Site Contribution for 2018-2019, pardon me, for the mayor's office at a total amount of $4,500. Any discussion on this? All right. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington, this resolution will adopt seven to zero. That'll take us to committee reports. Madam President.
Okay. We'll start with Bob.
Madam President, I don't have anything to report today other than I did want to put in a resolution for the snow to stop.
(LAUGHING) I second that.
Yeah, right? No, I did, I do want to just let the citizens know that the convention center does meet tomorrow. I'll be attending that meeting. And we're working, the mayor today just gave us some information about quality of life ticketing moving forward. We're gonna be having some discussions about that moving forward. That was something I put in two years ago, and I'm thankful for the administration to see that moving forward. And also, I just wanted to remind people that, you know, with the snow, I know we're all sick of shoveling it, but please keep the walks clear, especially with the kids going through to and from the school. If you could keep your walks clean, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. I always forget that this is on TV, but I'm sure a lot of you saw my face when somebody came up to the podium and accused people on council of being cowards, heartless, corrupt, nefarious, and colluding. And another person said we were engaged in backroom deals and, I don't know, some kind of non-transparent emails about the viaduct. So, I'm just here to say I'm not a coward, I'm not heartless, I'm not corrupt, I'm not nefarious, and there's been no collusion. So, if you do have evidence of some backroom deals, please, you know, bring it forward instead of just coming to the podium and claiming there's backroom deals. All right. Now on to some happy stuff. I wanted to, Kathy Schoff and I attended the Young Erie Professionals Downtown Housing Tour, I think it was a week ago Wednesday. I was the oldest young professional there, but actually I had to talk my way into it because we are, I'm too old, and I think even Kathy, who's 10 years young, we're too old to be young professionals. But it was a great opportunity to see what has already been developed in downtown. I think going to some of the projects, like we went to, we were able to go to Level Place, we went to Modern Tool, went to the Mercantile Building, we went through the best Bayfront East Side Task Force neighborhood, we went to our West Bayfront, we went to the townhouses on Peach Street. So, when you can see what has happened over, really over decades, and you look at the people who had the foresight to, you know, develop Level Place and Modern Tool, and they're now success stories, it was really cool. It was also neat just to be with young people who aren't necessarily thinking about moving downtown, but want to act as ambassadors in the particular jobs that they have to talk up Erie. It also brought to my attention the fact that we really do hope that council will have some communication from the new Erie Downtown Development Corporation. We haven't had any contact with that private group because we would really like to know what's going to be, what their plans are. We've been to a lot of the combined school Erie refocus meetings. Oh, yeah. Bob was there last night at the, at MLK Center. So, every meeting has a slightly different flavor. Sometimes there's more citizens than others, sometimes there's more like people who are more part of the business aspect of it. The one that I thought was really great was the, was the noontime meeting in Little Italy. And it's amazing how many business representatives were there, and property owners, and social service agencies, and citizens talking up their neighborhood. This was at noon, and I think it shows what happens when you have really strong community organizations that can bring people together. I learned about Berry Plastics. I did not realize that Berry Plastics is in the same building where there was a place called Heisler Locomotive. I thought I knew a lot about Erie history, did not know about Heisler Locomotive. So, that was, that was really neat. And I heard some talk about them possibly bringing another line up from, I think, Arkansas. So, those will be some additional jobs. Went to Blighted Property Review Committee. I know that, as Bob mentioned, and I thank John Redinger out there for also tagging us about the quality of life ticketing, so that is gonna be moving forward. Planning Commission, there's work proceeding on a demolition ordinance which will cover not just the preservation aspect, but also the environmental and safety and security aspects of demolition. And Sewer Authority, the consulting engineer will be here likely in May to present a proposed capital budget. And I just wanted to say I thank Kathy Schoff for her letter to the editor about all the litter around Erie. She's really doing a great job in bringing that to our attention, and how can we address that? Thank you.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Madam President. No report.
Thank you, Madam President. No committee reports this evening. Just want to thank the folks for coming out tonight. I do want to thank the mayor for coming to our caucus meeting before council meeting today. He does bring up some ideas and thoughts that he presents to council and something we can possibly digest or possibly put into play here in the future. One being, that is nobody's secret, is a citywide LERTA. Coming in, or at this point right now, for the record, I'm not for a citywide LERTA. But with that being said, between study sessions and between listening to the pros and cons of what that would do for the city on the whole, it's something that should be discussed. And I appreciate the mayor bringing that to council. We will have a study session, and we'll move forward from there. One other item brought up was naturally our rental program. Everybody on council here, once again, know we have some issues, serious issues with it. But with that being said, we want to correct them and see what we can do as a group to make it better as well as keep it in place. We are scheduled to have one study session. I don't know if it was officially publicized yet. We're gonna have one study session with the auditors, followed by a second study session with code enforcement and Andy Zimmerman to see how some of the issues are being handled as well as some of the delinquents. One thing the mayor brought into play, just a possible plan to help ease the landlords who are compliant, who are paying their taxes, who are paying their fees, you know, try to give them a little bit of a reward to investing in the city and following by the rules of the rental program, and how we can move forward with that. But before we can put that into play, we want to do our homework on how the program has been run the last couple of years, and it's reached the point, we need to definitely do something, so we're gonna move forward with that. Other than that, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I would encourage people to attend the meetings that are on Tuesdays that have been with the Erie City Hall and talking about the refocused plan in their neighborhoods with the Erie School District as a partner, and what direction they want to go into. That is a great time for all people to have a say. Everyone there has open discussions, and they're the people that can address all the questions there. I have gone to a few, and they are really informative, and I would encourage everyone out there to attend those meetings. When Liz and I were in Harrisburg at the beginning of March, we had a speaker, James Hunt, who wrote this book called The Amazing City, and he talked to us about The Amazing City. He was on council himself for many years and travels all over the world. And he talks about parks as being important, and I just want to share just a little bit because I grew up playing in parks, and when I had children, we went to parks. I mean, that's like the big thing. Parks are wonderful, and we have so many parks in Erie that we can take advantage of. And you don't need to drive by car, you can get on a bus, or you can walk. So, the power of parks, and he has a quote in here from David Suzuki, "Nature surrounds us, from parks and backyards to streets and alleyways. Next time you go out for a walk, tread gently, and remember that we are both inhabitants and stewards of nature in our neighborhoods." One of the most, and then, that's from David Suzuki, and then he goes on, "One of the most important assets in any city is the park system. This has been true for as long as cities have existed. In fact, before the advent of air conditioning and single-family homes, parks were a needed part of many cities. Swimming pools, swing sets, and ball fields are a treasured memory of countless millions of Americans who grew up considering their neighborhood park as their own front yard. Whether large or small, a park can enhance a city and provide a quality of life for the residents. It is nearly impossible to name a great city anywhere in the world that does not have a great public park system." And then he goes, "Amazing parks are not limited to big cities, as many of the finest parks are located in smaller communities. I've visited hundreds of cities that have great parks. One in particular is Bluffton, Indiana. I visited Bluffton several years ago and was impressed with their beautiful park system. They have a concert clam shell with acres of green grass and other park amenities. It is located close to restaurants and shopping areas and gives residents a place to spend time with their children in a safe and clean environment." Erie has so many parks, not just like Liberty Park in the summertime for the concert series, but there are many, many neighborhood parks out there. And I just encourage everyone to take a deep breath and relax in your favorite park.
Thank you, Madam President. We attended the police pension meeting, and the fund is doing very well considering the present market situations. We also attended the Blighted Property Review Committee, and I want to thank my appointment, John Redinger, also. There's a lot of work being done in that committee. It used to be pretty much a half-hour, 15-minute meeting. We now keep them at 45 minutes to an hour. That means things are being accomplished. Study session will be announced shortly for the BIU program, and we'll be announcing that to say there's a lot of work to be done. That would be an understatement. We're gonna take a long, hard look at that program and make sure that what we do is gonna be right for the future. As for LERTA, I'd be in favor of expanding LERTA, doing whatever we have to do. When you, when you look at other cities around the Commonwealth, and I know people get tired of hearing about Allentown, but since I go there a lot, I'm amazed at the number of projects, and not just Allentown, but Lancaster, Reading, the number of projects that have been started well after ours. We're still sitting there treading in quicksand, trying to get certain projects off the ground. And if it means reinstituting LERTA, or reinstituting some method of encouraging development, we need to do that. It's not like people are knocking on the door of Erie to develop. We have to actually go out there and coerce them a little bit. It's gonna take a lot of hard work, and I think it can be accomplished. I many, remember many years ago, when I was on the school board, we were faced with the first issue, which was what to do with the land east of the dock near the present-day Sewer Department, the disposal plant. And there was some hesitance there about doing anything, but we did pass the LERTA and various other programs, and you see, we've had development there. You had to wait a little bit for the taxes, but they're there. Same thing with Erie Insurance. There are times when we've given them breaks, but in a number of years, they're now a tax-paying entity. So, I think there's gonna be a little sacrifice, but I think if we're gonna encourage people to renovate their property, and why should one section of the city be punished because you're in the wrong area? We should allow it for, you know, on a basis that everybody should be allowed the opportunity, and businesses, to start relocating in Erie. Lastly, I mentioned this two weeks ago, and nothing's been done yet, but I'm still not happy with driving down Parade Street and seeing cars parked on the sidewalk, barricades, trash, and it's all roughly between 18th to 28th Street, on that east side mostly. There's no reason why anybody should be parking cars on the sidewalk. We as citizens are talking about McBride viaduct and portability of people, yet you can't walk down Parade Street. And this has been going on, not only in the winter, but it's there tonight when I came in. We can't have that. 19th Street, I received calls on my talk show, plus at home, people there, and I understand now we have a building project, we're talking about east of Parade Street to Holland area, roughly. And even though we have building projects there, this has been going on for two and three years, there's no reason why heavy trucks need to be using that road. They can use 18th Street and come off the side. But the citizens that live there are no less important than any of us, and they, they're, they feel their road's been damaged, hasn't been fixed in the previous administration, so you get a mulligan on this one. But we need to look at 19th Street and, and look at the plate But we need to look at Nineteenth Street and, and look at the plight of those people, the dirt that existed there, the dumping, the snow that was brought there. Now at least, we're getting a building project, but we need to be sensitive that they have a quality of life, too. So, I'll be pointing out many more areas of the city, but it's time we start getting a little tough. We got a lot of work to do, we want the city to look great, so that's on us to make sure we follow through. Thank you.
Okay, I have no committee report, so that takes us to Teresa.
I have nothing.
Mayor?
Want to just make everyone aware that this Saturday, we're having a program, it's a national pilot on strengthening police-community relations. We've got groups, Michael Outlaw's been heading that up, and it's, what may come out of this is going to run from ten to six. We've got eight different groups that are participating, there'll be about eight to ten members of each group there. We're going to introduce the program, and then they'll go to individual rooms with a trained facilitator, there'll be no political candidates or elected officials in the rooms so that people can speak freely. And what they're going to ask them to talk about is, number one, what is your group's relationship with the police? What's good about it? What, you know, what's working with your relationship to the police? And then, number two, what problems or issues do you have with the police? After these groups come up with their lists, will we get back together, debrief them? We'll put everything on flip charts, and then we're going to have the groups, everyone present, rate what are the most important ones that we should work on. Then we're going to have lunch with them, and then come back, and then we're going to kind of mix the groups up, so there'll be members from each eight groups, individual groups, where they'll be working on the issues that are raised, and say, okay, we've got these issues, how do we address them? I'm really excited about this, I think it's going to make a huge difference, and really give us direction over the next couple of years in terms of what we should be working on to improve police-community relationships, which is a priority with my administration. I also had the opportunity to go to Bishop Brock's Eagle's Nest today, and he's got two graduating classes from there. Five of the graduates will be apprentices, working on the Erie Insurance construction. Fifteen of them are guaranteed full-time jobs at Modern Tool. These were all African-Americans, and I had really a great conversation with them, and it wasn't just me talking to them, it was give and take. They asked me some really good questions, some of which I had to admit, I don't have an answer for that, I got to work on that. But it was, it was a great conversation, I'm really, really proud of what Bishop Brock and Aunt Janet Jackson, who runs the program, the work they do there, they are really making a difference in terms of employment for our minorities. One other thing, kind of along the same line, as you know, Unified Erie does a call-in program. I'm going to participate in one in early May. We've been going through rehearsals and, you know, I'm very impressed by the people involved in this call-in program. The people that are called in are, they happen to be young men who are kind of on the fringes of gangs, and we're going to encourage them to pick a different type of life. And there's also going to be a threat there, there's pictures of them that will be shown that the police, and all of law enforcement in the area is involved in this. It's not just Erie Police, but it's the county, it's the state, it's the federal authorities in town, and we're trying to give them an opportunity to change their lives for the better. And I can tell you, everyone participating, I think there's about nine of us that are going to speak to them, everyone is volunteering their time, you know, no one has to be there. But we want to make a difference and turn these young men's lives around and make them better. The community meetings on refocus, I want to thank Mrs. Allen, Mrs. Schoff, and Mr. Mersky for attending last night. I appreciate your words today about it. The next meeting, by the way, is next Tuesday at the JFK Center at six P.M., if anybody's interested in attending that. We learned that there's going to be a new work of art put up on the side of the Palace Hardware Store, and it's going to be huge. I mean, it's going to cover a lot of that side, if you're familiar, right up at Ninth and State. On the corner is the bank, right next to that is Palace Hardware, and there's kind of like a, it's wider than an alley, but an area in between the two, and that is where this work of art's going to go. And it was done largely by Erie High School students, and largely by a new American involvement. And it artistically represents like all of us, from our diverse backgrounds, coming together, and it's, it's really a moving work of art. I think that's, there's no date set yet, but I think that's going to be unveiled in a ribbon-cutting in late May or early June, so watch for that, it'll be a neat thing to see. It's going to help the downtown. And Tom Kennedy, who owns Palace Hardware, is so impressed with this work of art, he's talking about making some changes to that area between the bank and Palace Hardware, so it can almost become more like a park with benches and trees, and it could be a really neat area here in Erie going forward. I also attended, out in Harbory High School on April eleventh, a public hearing on the heroin epidemic, which I don't know if anybody had a chance to go to that. It was very moving, there were recovering addicts who spoke about what they went through, and it's something that I don't think you can really understand unless you've been through it, but it was, it was very moving, and that's certainly a major problem for us, not just in the city, but really throughout the whole county, and hopefully we'll get our hands, arms around that better going forward. Last item is with regard to LERTA, I appreciate you considering it, and look forward to a study session where we kind of present the arguments. Couple things I forgot to say during the caucus is, every major developer I've talked to in town has basically told me they can't do anything without the LERTA, any major projects, because they feel that they have to charge too high a rents if they don't get the break for ten years on the real estate tax. Also, Chris Groner, you know, he manages a seven million dollar city loan fund for local businesses. He's got three loans approved, ready to go, valued at about seven hundred thousand dollars, but the people he's making the loans to, the business owners, don't want them yet, they're waiting to see if we do a LERTA or not. So, that is something I appreciate your consideration on, and we'll do everything we can to provide you the information you need to make a decision on that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Ed, you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, I like the citizens for coming out, thank y'all for coming out and sharing your issues and concerns with us, and thanks for staying to the end of the meeting. Have a nice evening. This meeting is adjourned.
City council adjourns at eight fifty-five. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr.